We'll now reconvene for open session. Roll call, Madam Clerk. Councilmember Mosby?
Present.
Councilmember Starbuck?
Present.
Councilmember Vega?
Here.
Mayor Potem Gilda Cordova?
Present.
Mayor Janelle Osborne?
Here.
Report from closed session.
Thank you, Mayor. The council discussed the two items on the agenda in closed session. One item of existing litigation, a workers' comp action, and one item of anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation. The city council discussed both items, but no reportable action was taken.
Thank you. Please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City manager report, please.
Thank you, Mayor and council. The first item I'd like to bring up, and we have it on here as a bullet point, is the discussion and extension, or the discussion for the extension and cancellation of a commission committee and board meetings, with the exception of the planning commission. If you recall, in March, we did postpone all the, or canceled all those meetings during the COVID outbreaks. So, we've hit that 30-day point, so now we need to find out if we should continue with the different commissions and committees, putting them sort of on a hiatus until this is over. I don't know if there's any council discussion to continue that.
Councilmember Starbuck?
Mr. Throop, why don't we bring it to a point where if they have business, they can go ahead and meet. If they have none, no meet. If they have something that needs to be taken care of, they meet.
Part of it goes back to the social distancing and trying to keep it public. Yeah, I know. It's...
Or call down. I mean, we...
It would be up to the council if you want to continue it or not. They can do a Zoom meeting. We talked about Zoom meetings. I was talking with Councilmember Vega about that. There's, for a Zoom meeting, it takes a little more technical assistance to go along because we'll have to have someone manning it. We have to record it and do different pieces for that. But, the idea when it was first set up was to keep it a social distance.
I mean, typically, the commissions don't receive a whole lot of public input, so it would be just a commission and staff.
True. Yes.
But it does have to remain open to the public. So...
Well, yeah, it's got to remain open, but typically, the participation level isn't there. And, I mean, if there's nothing going on, they wouldn't meet. If the utility commission has something to review, they would meet. I mean, they don't have to meet in a small little room. They could meet in chambers.
Correct.
I say maybe just go ahead and start phasing in some of the commissions and committees.
Councilmember Vega.
I have had discussions with the city manager. I had a discussion with him on changes to allow our commissions and our committees to meet. I think we have all kind of a, a little bit of a meeting of the minds that these commissions, and I've been approached by several people that would like to meet via Zoom or via any kind of other social media. And I think that's appropriate because some of the, after doing a little research on Zoom, it'd be little to no cost to the city because if you, up to 45 minutes, the Zoom meetings are free. If they could limit their meetings to 45 minutes or so and invite the public, it'd be a great way for them to meet. For instance, the beautification committee, it's springtime, people are doing something at home. They're planting, they're trying to keep busy. Home Depot's still open. They'd like to be involved and still be an encouragement and be a, be an example to the city on what we can do and just to keep inspiring everyone to clean up their yards, clean up their lots, planting, and so forth. So, I'd like to make a recommendation that we change and do away from the moratorium to a virtual meeting setup and allow the committees and commissions to meet in that fashion. After speaking with Mr. Throop, it's, not having to modify the times or anything could still work, as he said that staff could, it actually might be a little bit easier for staff to meet because they could, wherever they're at, they could, the ones that are chairing the meeting would be able to do that from their home or wherever. So, there wouldn't be any additional cost involved. So, that would be my recommendation, that we change this and allow the commissions and committees that choose to meet, all with the exception of the planning commission, who are still meeting the same way that we are. And that would be my recommendation to allow them to move forward.
So, there is some limitations to the Zoom concept. The model you're talking about that is the free and limits to 45 also has a limit on the number of people that can participate. So, I think if a commission chooses to utilize Zoom, they need to go through the city's account, which would not have as much limitation and also provide a phone number to call in for those that don't have a computer ability. So, I think it's a combination of the recommendation from Councilmember Starbuck, that those committees that have items they need to meet on can choose to hold a meeting, either called as a special meeting or on their agendized time as long as they notice it appropriately, or have the option for a Zoom meeting through the staff pulling that together and providing a phone number and manning that because that will have to be recorded and archived appropriately for public to access. So, I think you could use either methodology depending on what the group is comfortable doing.
I could interject. Yes, absolutely. And the, and the plan is to have city staff facilitate this. It wouldn't be done by the committee or the commissioners. It would be from the staff members. Of course, yeah, there's limitations on Zoom. If you go over 45 minutes, and there's little, there's small costs, but it's nothing big. So, if you go over 45 minutes, it's $14. There are different formats, but after speaking with the city manager, it didn't seem like any of those were obstacles.
Well, I believe the city has an account that's different than, than, than what you see offered. We did set up an account in order to have some of our consultants participate. And so, I do know we have a different level of account that allows for longer meetings and archiving appropriately. And that's, that's why I'm saying it needs to be through staff.
Yeah, I appreciate that. And, you know, I'm not the expert at it, but people have been giving me some level of public participation. It is important for everyone to feel like they're involved and they're committed to the city. We can't do it without the outreach to our committees and our commissioners and the people that we appoint, so I want them to feel value also. So, I think it's appropriate at this time for me to make that motion and see if I can get some support moving forward for the change in the meeting formats for committees and commissioners, committees and commissions.
Did you ask for a format change?
I was, I was asking for the moratorium to be waived and allow them to meet virtually right now in some form or fashion. I'm not selling Zoom. There may be other formats that I'm not aware of. But, I want them to be able to meet. Councilmember Starbuck, and I think it's appropriate that they be able to meet. They can invite the public. City staff will still facilitate. And, and let's move forward. So, is there something else I need to do to do this?
No, I'm just going to let Councilmember Cordova speak once you're done speaking.
Okay.
Because we're still having discussion.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Cordova?
So, I think that a lot of our commissions or committees, they're not exactly well-attended by the public, but there is obviously the option there for the public to come in and participate as well as comment during public comment. I know that our planning commission is probably the most attended one when there are certain projects in motion that would be of interest to certain individuals or impact certain individuals within our community. And, so, I don't know that I agree with Councilmember Vega's request to change the format to make it just digital or just have digital meetings. I don't know that that's fully necessary. I think that I agree with Councilmember Starbuck in having the ability to let the committees or commissions decide whether there's a need to have the meeting. My concern, what I would actually say is, is that City Hall, we need to implement certain steps. This room is full today in the seats that we've allowed for, for social distancing. However, there's nobody in our audience that's currently wearing a mask. And that's why I typically don't wear a mask, but I put one on because of the amount of people in this room. So, I think that we need to set up a protocol in our City Hall that maybe when, when we do have our public come in, just ask them to wear a mask if they're going to come down to City Hall. And then, we follow the social distancing. Everybody's following it right now. The only difference is, what concerns people, there's some people that are very concerned with some people not wearing a mask or wearing a mask or whatnot be the case. So, that would be my recommendation, is, is that we don't necessarily need to change the protocol or the setup of how we do our meetings. We can leave them to the discretion of the committees or commissions based on the need or what they feel is on the agenda that they need to discuss. Allow the public to come in and just follow the social distancing protocol and maybe add the requirement that people wear a mask when they come in because it is such a small quarters.
Councilmember Mosby?
I can support what you're saying, except for the mask component. Let the, decide in enhancing what Councilmember Vega said, but allow the Zoom, but also the other way, but let the commission decide. Because some of the commissioners, there's older commissioners and stuff, and then they might feel more protected with the Zoom components. But, let them, let them go through and decide what they feel they could do. But, yeah.
So, I'm hearing that council would be okay with allowing committees to decide if they have items they need to discuss and choose whether or not to have a physical meeting with social distancing in the council chambers, or to opt into a Zoom meeting that is made, still available to the public and archived appropriately and provides a way for public comment. We've had the recommendation that the social distancing continue and that we request those that enter City Hall for these meetings, wear a mask. And I tend to agree with that simply before the understanding that it's an asymptomatic transmission. There is a desire to protect those around us that aren't able to fight this off. And the more we can reduce transmission, whether we know whether we have it or not, is the purpose for the masks. It isn't that the masks cure anything. It isn't that the masks stop anything. It's the reduction of transmission. So, I completely understand asking all of us to agree that as a way to protect others around us, that we all agree to wear masks. So, I would support that. I'm looking for a third on that. The first two things, I think, are absolutely the options being left up to it. But, I agree with Councilmember Cordova regarding masks. Councilmember Vega?
The recommendation by Councilwoman Cordova is, is better than my recommendation because I was hoping that we could meet in, they could meet in person, but I was trying to come to something that was other than a moratorium. So, I would agree with that. I think that masks for the, I think for the audience, ask them to wear a mask is not out of bounds. I think forcing someone to do it is another thing. So, I think it should be an option where we ask them to wear them. And I, I think I would support that.
Okay. So, you have three with the request to put a mask request in place, not a mandate, and to allow Zoom meetings and in-person meetings for those committees and commissions other than planning commission that have items they need to meet for. Okay? Any other reports?
Just a couple other quick ones. Again, I know I sound like a broken record, but we have hit 60% on our census. This is a very good turnout for that, but that means we still have 40% more that we can go. And, the census is very critical for the city of Lompoc. It depends, it helps us decide on federal grants and state grants. So, if everyone go online, we have a link on our website to it. Took me less than 10 minutes to do it. It's very simple. Just ask you some questions and how many people live in your house and all that. If we can get up to 100%, that would be great. That would really help us out. The other one is, the state and county, this is brand new, are now going to be doing COVID testing at three locations within the county. The first one was Santa Maria that's open today. There was a change. It was, it's Lompoc and also Santa Barbara. They were going to come later, but the governor said, nope, they have to be open also this week. So, Lompoc's testing center will be open this Thursday. It's going to be at the Anderson Rec Center. And, in order to get tested, the individual would need to go to the Santa Barbara County Public Health website, and there's a button they have on there to register. It takes the person today who did it, he was discussing it, said it takes about 15 minutes. It's not a, just put your name in and here we go, because they'll ask you different types of questions because there are a prioritization to it. So, signing up doesn't necessarily guarantee a test, but it gets you in the queue. They're going to go first with public safety, first responders, essential workers, and people with underlying conditions will be sort of the prioritization. And then, if they have time, they're going to be doing others. Their goal is about 660 tests per week at each location. They'll be open some fairly substantial hours trying to get all that done. And then, approximately two business days is what they say for a result on the test to the person. So, that is, that is in place. And, lastly, I just, I'd like to give kudos to our city staff. During the COVID-19 pandemic, we've furloughed over 100 employees, and the remaining staff has had to step up and take on the extra duties. Staff's been working very hard to keep the public safe and healthy, and I just think they deserve a little shout-out for that. And that was it.
For those of you interested in the community-based testing that will begin at Anderson Rec Center, you can register online at HTTPS colon forward slash forward slash L H I dot CARE C A R E forward slash COVID testing, or you can call 1-888-634-1123 to make an appointment. That can also be found at thepublichealthsbc.org under the testing link with that information. So, for the public, that is where you can go to do the registration for those tests being ramped up at the Anderson Rec Center on Thursday. Any questions for Councilmember Cordova?
City manager, I just wanted to ask, because I know it's, it's actually, I looked at my calendar today, and it actually has been a month. I know that you just mentioned that the city had furloughed almost 100 positions, and it was on April 6th that I asked if we could get, if I could get a list, obviously, to the rest of my council as well, if I could get a list of what positions were furloughed. And, I was told that I was going to be provided one, and, and I haven't been. So, if we could provide that, 100 positions is quite a bit of positions, and that's great. And, again, kudos to the staff that's maintaining and holding up the fort. But, I'd like to know what those positions are.
Sorry. Yeah, I apologize. I will get that, and we'll get that to you tomorrow.
Seeing no other questions, we will move on to the public comment on consent calendar. This is for consent calendar items only. We have had a request to pull item four, so that will be moved to the end of our...
Here.
Yes?
I really apologize, but I know I asked you to pull item four, but I, I don't think we need to.
Okay.
I just want to state for the record that on item number four, which is the declaration of a nuisance and abatement order for certain properties for weeds and debris, we have an amended list of properties because our battalion chief fire marshal was out in the field today doing a last-minute, up-to-the-minute assessment of the properties.
Okay.
So, that amended list is in front of you on the dais, and there are also copies for the public on the table outside.
Thank you. So, we won't pull item four unless there's a council member who desires to pull it. Councilmember Mosby?
Just one request on, on the amended list. If we could put a, a date on this, would probably be, so that we understand. In other words, we have two exhibit A's, but if we have the date, it would be more directional.
So, the consent calendar is considered to be routine and will be enacted in one motion in the form listed below. There will be no separate discussions of these items unless good cause is shown prior to council vote. And, any item withdrawn from the consent calendar for separate discussion will be addressed immediately before the second oral communication near the end of the muting. We will now open the floor for public comment on consent calendar, maximum of three minutes. If you desire to call in and have a comment, it's 805-875-8201. That's 805-875-8201. And you should mute your TV, computer, or radio upon acceptance of that call. We'll begin with any commentary from in the room. So, if there is an item on the consent calendar you wish to speak to, please step forward to the podium. Seeing none, we will move to see if anyone called at 805-875-8201. Seeing no one call, we will close the public comment on consent calendar and bring it back to council. Councilmember Cordova?
It's just a minor error. On the meeting minutes, it says "action." Under the first point of business, it said Councilmember Cordova was absent, but could we change that to just recused and accept it as is? It does say that I returned to the dais, and it does say on top that I recuse myself, but it's just in that first sentence, it just says absent. I don't know if that makes a difference.
Absent means that you, did you not leave the dais at that point?
Yeah, but...
That's what that means.
Right. So does recused. And I just, you know. It's fine if you guys don't want to change it. I just thought I'd bring it up.
Every other time that I've had a council member leave the dais, I say absent.
Okay.
Councilmember Vega? Councilmember Vega?
I'd be okay with making a motion to accept the consent calendar, but I myself viewed some of the properties, I wanted to bring it up to the Battalion Chief. There's one other property here, the 220 East Cypress, that's been remediated, and maybe we can't catch all of them, but I wanted to bring that up. It's a vacant lot in the corner of East Cypress and F Street, it's on the list.
So I have a motion to accept consent calendar. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
And I have a second. Any other questions or discussion? Seeing none, let's vote. Consent calendar passes 5-0. We will now open the floor for all communications on any city-related matter, even if it's not on the agenda. If it is on the agenda, we ask that you consider staying for that item, so that we hear you during that time, but we understand and respect if you need to comment now on any of the agenda items. The number again to call in is 805-875-8201, and you should mute your TV, computer, or radio upon calling in. Again, 805-875-8201. And we will begin with any in-room comments for general oral communication on city matters. Please step forward to the podium.
My name, my name is Dallas White. I've been a, lived in Long Poak basically all my life, and I'd like to talk about opening Long Poak. The definition of pandemic, according to Webster's Dictionary, is an outbreak of disease that occurs over a wide geographic area and affects an exceptionally high portion of the population. The example cited is, of course, the 1918 flu, as a pandemic that claimed the lives, millions of lives worldwide. 675,000 people died nationwide. The extreme measures that we took, that were taken at the beginning of this potential pandemic, were based on mathematical models that showed hundreds of thousands of people dying. The measures taken were prudent at the time. These measures are not true for today, given the current numbers reported by the CDC and the Santa Barbara County Public Health Department. California has, and these numbers were as of yesterday, 54,937 confirmed cases of COVID. That calculates to less than 0.14 of 1% of, of the population of California that have been confirmed with, with COVID. This means that 99.86% of the people have not been affected by this pandemic, and the clear numbers reported by the CDC do not even meet the definition of a pandemic. Long Poak's numbers follow the same pattern, 84 confirmed cases, one death. That means that you have a 99.85% chance of being healthy and normal, right here in Big L. So this is a message that our city council should look to be promoting to the citizens of Long Poak, to overcome the fear mongering that has been put forth by the media, even considering the total number of people tested in Santa Barbara County who had symptoms. Just under 90% of those, of those people were negative for COVID-19. As we move forward with reopening Long Poak, we should still encourage the infirm and those with compromised immune systems to take extra precautions. Historically in America, it was the sick that were quarantined, not the healthy. Ladies and gentlemen of the city council, it's time to reopen Long Poak. Hello, Philip Gallanders, Long Poak resident. And I too wish to open Long Poak. The numbers all across the country are going down. The numbers all across the country never, ever rose to the peaks that we were all warned about, scared about, terrorized about by the media, all based on faulty modeling, which was, as it was amended, the number came from 2.2 million dead, down to half a million dead, down to 300,000 dead, down to 100,000 dead, maybe? We don't know. But what we do know is that with the rates declining as they are, as Dallas just said, the percentages of those who are ill do not rise to the level of defining pandemic. We have basically bat flu, and it's making us batty, and it's killing our economy, and all of the businesses in this city, upon which their sales generate revenue for this city. In the absence of that, the cities in a financial world are hurt. We gotta start being sensible, we gotta stop being scared, we gotta look at the reality, we've got to use common sense and caution, and make the correct decision to open up with caution. But nevertheless, don't wait for somebody on high to say, "It's okay for you to go back to business." You gotta start, we've got to start, living for ourselves here, protecting ourselves here in this city, protecting this city. And by extension, all the rest of the folks in Solvang and Bulton will be doing the same thing. They have to. We can't wait for everybody to be tested, that's an absurd notion. It's an absolutely absurd notion. So, open Long Poak, please.
Good evening, council members. John Lynn, Long Poak resident. I want to share a few facts with you. You know, I've, I've spent the last six weeks in Arkansas. Arkansas never closed. Couldn't eat in a restaurant, couldn't get a haircut. Fortunately, someone was nice enough to do it in their home, so it's not quite straight, but it's okay. In Arkansas, I think the last time I looked, there were 1,900 cases statewide, and half of those were in three prisons. The same problem has occurred here, we had an outbreak at the Long Poak prison, but in terms of the general population, we haven't seen anything close to the numbers that were talked about. I think in hindsight, it'll be a gross overreaction, but it began in the metropolitan area in New York, where they had a huge outbreak. And they had a huge outbreak because in this room, there would have been 1,000 people on a subway, and so it transmitted easily. In Los Angeles, they didn't have a huge outbreak, because people drive their cars to work, and the same is true in Long Poak. Some interesting things along the way, there was a study, and they were looking at the senior care facilities, where in Florida, they spent a great deal of time providing PPEs and focusing on their senior care facilities, and they had the lowest rate of death of senior care facilities of major states. New York, on the other hand, didn't focus on it, and they had the highest rate, or maybe New Jersey was the highest, and they were second. So a lot of decisions were made because we didn't know what we didn't know, and now we do know. We also know, based on a study done by Stanford and by USC, that between 50 and 80 people are asymptomatic for every person that's diagnosed. Think about that for a moment. That means that somewhere between 55 and 90 million people in the United States have already had it, and most of them didn't know it, only about a million of them knew it. So it isn't a scourge that everybody thought of, it's only a scourge for older people like me, who have health conditions, thankfully I don't, but those are the people that need to be protected. A word about masks. This is an N95 mask. Anything other than this is not going to protect you. A surgical mask is going to keep you from spreading it to someone else, but it is not going to give you a level of protection. And how you handle that mask is very important. If you haven't looked at how to handle and dispose of a mask, please go online. There was also a pretty interesting study done by ICE, of all people, that showed that the best way to kill the virus is go out in the sunlight. It lasts about 45 seconds in half-life. So being outdoors is a good thing, it'd be nice if we could get outdoor areas open. So I think the message is the same message they gave you, it's a message of hope, that it isn't near as bad as we thought it was going to be, and we're all going to be just fine. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more in-room comments before we go to the phone? Seeing none, we'll move to the phone.
Hello, you're live in the Long Poak City Council meeting, you have three minutes to provide public comment.
Hello. My name is Teresa Doutney, and I would like to advocate for continued precautions. There's over 60,000 people dead in the United States because of this virus. The only reason Santa Barbara generally, and Long Poak specifically, have not seen the death rate is because of the early precautions we have taken. The virus does not only infect old people, it also infects young and middle-aged people. Check the internet for stories, I have. I want to keep our public servants safe and make masks mandatory if people want to communicate with our public servants. If they don't want to wear masks to keep everyone safe, they can wait until after the virus is passed. We have not been hard-hit because of early precautions. If we remove them too early, our death toll will rise. Please do not remove the precautions that are currently in place. I don't want to see people dying in this county. I would also like to see city council members set a good example and wear masks. Thank you Mayor Osborne and Councilwoman Cordova for doing so. This is not a fluke. The morgues were overflowing in many countries. This is not a joke. This is a deadly virus, and we need to be safe, and we need to keep our loved ones and our public servants safe.
Do we have any more phone calls?
Hello, you're live in the Long Poak City Council meeting, you have three minutes to provide public comment.
Thank you, my name's Jason Byard, I'm a Long Poak resident and work with Lima Steed and Petzby. We've been considered an essential business since day one, and even in that, in having been an essential business, we have lost, you know, 14% of our business, of people walking into our business and transactions happening, you know, at the register. For us, as a business, that's significant. We just celebrated our 48th anniversary as a company, and, you know, we, we have skin in this game. It is, our employees have been on the front lines every day. We have been open seven days a week since the beginning of the COVID-19 crisis, and we have not had a single employee test positive for the virus. We take it seriously, we take the precautions seriously. We're implementing face mask requirements for our staff, starting tomorrow, in all 14 of our locations. But I'm, I'm calling, not to sing our praises, but to request that the city council take a leadership stance on this issue. Don't allow the county or the state to do what's best for Long Poak. We need to open Long Poak in a controlled, safe way, but we need to open. We can't afford to not open, we can't afford to allow this to continue. We've luckily been spared the numbers of, you know, that have been mentioned already this evening, we've been spared the, you know, the horrors that were bespoke of what potentially could have happened with this disease, and thankfully, we've been able to, you know, move past that. But as a, as a city, we need to think of what's best for us down the road, and as stories of, you know, our state's inability to pay for this crisis, and to pay for the unemployment insurance and things like that, we need to get our, our people back to work. We need to get the citizens of Long Poak back to work, because we need to be able to continue to offer those life-saving services, like the police department, like the fire department, things of those natures. And in order to do that, we gotta have revenues coming into the city. So I appreciate the stance and the honesty from our, our council members, and I look forward to seeing you take a leadership role in this. So I appreciate your time and allowing me to speak.
Hello, you're live in the Long Poak City Council meeting, you have three minutes to provide public comment.
Thank you. Hi, Leah Brightman, Long Poak, City Council Mayor and fellow Long Pokans. I just wanted to remind everyone that when people cite numbers of people getting tested, and that the numbers are way lower than the original model stated, just wanted to remind everyone that until very recently, you could have been very sick with COVID-19 and couldn't get a test. So the numbers that people cite, saying, "Oh, it was media hysteria, and it isn't as bad," you don't really know that, because we don't actually know confirmed numbers of how many people have actually gotten this. The other point is, you know, everybody wants to open up the economy, I get that, people need to get back to work, but to cite the fact that we haven't seen the numbers that were originally anticipated, has a lot to do with the fact that we've been all staying at home. There is a very good chance that once we all liberate Long Poak and go out and start shopping, that we are going to see a sharp uptick in cases. So be prepared for that, we might have to shut down again. So don't listen to people who don't really know what they're talking about, listen to scientists when it comes to this, because sick people can't go out and spend money. And lastly, masks, yes, I realize that only N95 will protect you. The point is wearing them to protect everybody else. Nobody knows, because we don't have enough testing right now until Friday, who has it? So just to be a decent human being, wearing a mask outside is, is a show of respect for your fellow citizens. It doesn't make you weak, it doesn't make you a fan of Nancy Pelosi, or it doesn't make you want to eat quinoa, it just means that you're a decent human being, and you want to protect your fellow citizens. Have a great night!
Seeing no more calls, I will ask our city clerk if there are any written general
There was one. It was provided to the public, it's outside, it's provided to council and to staff.
Thank you. Seeing no additional calls, or anyone else in the room to provide comment, we will close oral communication and return to the agenda. The first item under public hearings is item seven, Adoption of Resolution 6325/20, related to assessment of charges for the 2019 weed abatement against properties at 413 South O Street and 416 East Walnut Avenue, and our Battalion Chief Fire Marshal, Dina Paschke, will make that presentation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, council, and our public and city staff. Tonight, we're here for an adoption, for staff recommendation to hear objectives of assessment for weed abatement charges against two parcels in town, that being 413 South O Place and 1416 East Walnut. Staff recommends adoption of Resolution 632520, assessing those charges as a lien and a special municipal tax, and to direct the city clerk to forward the assessments to the county tax collector's office for en- to the county tax collector's office for inclusion on the next cycle of property tax collections, or to provide staff with an alternative direction. Back in May of last year, on May 7th, 2019, city council directed the fire department to abate weeds at various properties in the city as part of our annual weed control process, which coincidentally is tonight for the first letter for this year's. Those abatements were completed, and we did have a contractor and two had incurred charges that were invoiced and the affected property owners. Most invoices have been paid, however, two remain outstanding. And that's what we're here tonight to discuss. When weed abatement is completed, the government code has established a process for the city to assess a lien on a parcel as a special assessment to be collected with the property taxes for that parcel. The owners of 413 South O Place and 1416 East Walnut have not paid the invoices for the weed abatement. Therefore, the city must collect the sums due to the adopting the attached resolution and submitting it to the county tax collector for collection with the next property tax billing cycle. We're ahead of that billing cycle, so we will be on the next property tax. The government code requires the posting of this agenda item for at least three days before the meeting. That requirement has been met. In addition, copies of the staff report and resolution were mailed to the last known addresses for both of the two properties. The fiscal impact is there are outstanding invoices for $2,096.12. There's a slight collection on here, which the city actually paid the weed abatement contractor a total sum of $1,500. The balance of that $2,000 sum is for the administrative cost. We don't collect administrative costs until we have to go to a forced abatement. So that's what you're seeing here. Submission to the tax collector will result in a reimbursement to the city, even if the taxes are not collected. As a city is a teeter city, and the Santa Barbara County has agreed to pay those taxes due our city, whether or not they're collected. In exchange, the county keeps the penalties and interest on the taxes when they're eventually collected. So in conclusion, we hope to adopt the resolution that you have attached before you as the last step in the annual weed abatement process and is required in order to collect the outstanding debts from the 2019 abatement season. You'll see one of the properties, unfortunately. In fact, even again this year, the letter's already been returned. The person that did occupy that home is deceased. So that's a very difficult thing. It must be lost in probate. It's been a couple years, so that is a bit of a mess. I'm sorry, but I'd rather give you that straightforward. The other property is a large parcel right near the hospital, so it does have a direct threat with one of our critical infrastructures. And so it's so large, the bill's a little bit more expensive to clear that. And that person lives in Honolulu, or at least the person responsible for the party. So that is the information I have before you. I'm here to help you with any questions, comments, or concerns. Thank you.
Councilmember Vega.
Deanna, I believe both of these properties came up before. And I believe the one on O Place, I have no common knowledge of that property, but they were gonna do an outreach, or someone was gonna do an outreach to a bank, or find out what the process was. Was there any additional information? Besides that we know that someone deceased, but was there a lien holder or something on this, or what happened?
It's still registered. It's lost in probate, essentially, so it hasn't been taken over by a bank. So it's still showing as a deceased person, according to the county assessor's office.
But is it a foreclosure, or what is it?
It hasn't entered that status. I'm not familiar with the probate and how long that takes, but apparently it's gone on two years, and it's still sitting vacant today.
Yeah, I guess probates can go on if there's people that don't agree.
Or no one in the family is around to even contact, which is, that is actually kind of what I've got the jest of from the assessors.
And the one person on 1416 East Walnut, are these being noticed with certified letters? Or is that what's happening here, or is it a general letter?
Can't speak for the city attorney's office for when they send the invoice, but yeah, on the second letters, we do certify and make sure that they get receipt of it. But I did check into a little bit, too. They're behind in their taxes several years as well. So maybe vacant lands foreclosed a little slower, so.
Yeah, just wanted to ask for clarification, so we know what we're doing here.
Yeah, we try to avoid this. In fact, we had one hundred and eighty-eight open cases last year. We're here for only two that didn't complete what we needed them to do or pay us after we mowed for them. So as far as overall, and that's just the ones that received a first letter. There was far more actually gone by and checked out.
Thank you.
Any more questions for our fire marshal before we take it to public comment? Thank you. We'll now open for public comment. For those of you who'd like to call in, the number's 805-875-8201. Again, 805-875-8201. And remember to mute your television, computer, or radio when you go on air. Are there any in-room commentary on this matter? Seeing no one rise, I will ask if there has been any emails regarding this matter? Nope. And once again, seeing the phone not ring, we will close public comment on this matter and bring it back to council. Councilmember Vega.
I'll make a motion that we accept.
Councilbacker.
Second.
Cordova's seconded, so we've got a good one. So we've got the vote down. I heard her. So any other questions or concerns before we vote? Seeing none, let's vote. And that passes five-zero. The next item is a council request, draft a letter to REACH, formerly Hourglass, on possible use of prison property for Vandenberg Air Force Base Business Expansion Zone, presented by city manager Trup.
Thank you, excuse me. Thank you, Mayor and council. So yes, a council request was made for the city manager to draft a letter to the nonprofit Economic Development Group. They're now known as REACH. They were originally called Hourglass. And this concerned the proposed Vandenberg Air Force Base Business Zone expansion on the Air Force Base property. So, real quick, so REACH has been working with, from Lompoc in the south to Paso all the way up to the north, including Camp Roberts. They're trying to be, trying to create a synergy among the whole central coast to bring businesses in and help everybody, you know, all boats rise with the tide. So Vandenberg is, if you look at the whole area, Vandenberg is probably the biggest player in there. So Vandenberg, with their space launches that are gonna be taking off even more so in the year 2020, they've been looking at pulling back the fences, they say, for about fifteen hundred acres and allowing private businesses to come in and build their own facilities there. So they're right there at the base, rather than SpaceX, for example, is down in Hawthorne. They gotta truck everything up. They gotta boat it up on a barge, do whatever they need to do. So this would allow different companies to come in there and do it. The proposal, one was right around the south gate. The other part was on the south side of the north base, right there on, you know, one side of the estuary or the other, if you wanna look at it that way. So a council request was made to say, hey, you know, we have, we don't have, but there's three thousand acres of business possible space up there at the prison. It's within city limits. So this letter is to essentially notify REACH that besides just those two areas on the base, that there might be a possibility among those three thousand acres of prison property that maybe something can be used there. So this letter is basically an introduction to REACH, to have them look at that and consider that also available for questions.
Councilmember Starbuck.
Good letter, but I just, a small input to me, the very last sentence in it will do my best. Could we change that, and I will get?
Sure. That's, yeah.
It just, it seems a lot more positive when we send it.
Councilmember Cordova.
I actually felt that if this is our attempt, and I don't know if we've had verbal communications with REACH and Vandenberg Air Force Base in regards to this plan for the fifteen hundred acres, but if this is our first attempt as a written letter, I personally feel that it does leave a lot to be desired in the sense of putting Lompoc really at the forefront of making sure that, for example, when we talk about giving them the option of the three thousand acres, it says, "Then you guys can talk amongst each other." And to me, I would think that if Lompoc is gonna bring this to the table, we want to be at the table. We wanna be at the discussions. This will prime, any growth that Vandenberg Air Force Base has as an installation should one-hundred percent first and foremost benefit Lompoc and us as a city be able to service their needs and be able to hopefully take in that business first before any other city, whether it be Santa Maria or further out, takes advantage of the growth that Vandenberg has. We need to take advantage of that growth first and foremost. So I wasn't sure if this letter was our first attempt or if there's actually been verbal discussions with them.
No, this is the first one, because the base is sort of the driver of it. So they were saying, "We're gonna do it on our property." And then this came up. It was the discussion that the three thousand acres already sit within city limits. But it is, it's, being that it's not prison prop, or it's not Air Force property, it's prison property, that's what the discussion was, just to open up the door and talk to them. And then I can follow up with phone calls to them to discuss it more.
Yeah, so my concern is that Vandenberg has expressed a desire to have fifteen hundred acres of their own site developed. I know that there are some, and maybe you can talk about those. I know that there are some potential setbacks for us as a city, because we would have to take the utilities to them, to that site, correct? It's not ready for utilities. Is that correct? Could you talk about that a little bit?
So for, for the fifteen hundred acres on their property, or even on the, I keep mixing up, on the prison property, there's, there still would have to be utilities taken to both sites. They don't go to the areas that would be needed.
So on both sites, you would need it, but on the, on the three thousand acres closer to the prison, it's within city limits? So it would be, what, closer? Is that what?
Yeah, it's closer. They wouldn't pay the time and a half, or the cost and a half, or say sewer for that part. So that would save the funding for whatever business might go there. So there is the benefits that we have. We wouldn't have to do any special agreements if they're outside city limits.
So my comment is just that I personally wouldn't approve of this letter going out as our first initial form of communication. Again, because I think that if the base has expressed a desire to develop fifteen hundred acres of their own land, we should be figuring out and focusing on how we can kind of build that out with them, offering them something that doesn't even belong to us, and then telling them, "Go talk to each other", to me is not, you know, the best climax for, or climate for negotiating on behalf of Lompoc.
Councilmember Mosby.
So this land used to be owned by the army. Is it now Bureau Prisons? Has it all been transferred over to Bureau Prisons?
Yeah, overall, but that one little island where the antenna farm was.
So I think, I think that little island's three hundred and fifty acres that the base already owns. So they already have three hundred and fifty acres up there that they own. And as before, like with Hancock, the school up there, the public safety training facility and such, that land was, through negotiations, was brought to better use, so to say. So a lot of this land up there really is kind of idle. In 1968, 1969, when thirty-one hundred acres was annexed, there was different anticipations at that time. So I think we have a lot of land inside our city limits that's sitting there idle right now. That we need to try to reach and do something with it. And I think in this letter, I think it'd be more appropriate if it was more of a, an outreach in a gathering, not, you know, maybe we could work together with the Bureau Prisons and such, because it could be an asset for the prison as well, with more of what they're trying to do. It could work out with some of their groups. It might be some land that they see that they don't need anymore. But I think we need to enter into negotiations. We have a huge chunk of land inside the city limits that we're gaining little, other than the prison workers that are there. We're gaining little for the town. So I think it's important to do, to put this together more of a, you know, let's work together type of letter with the Bureau Prisons and see. And if the army no longer has anything with it, it wasn't long ago they did, as well as identifying, I think it should identify the three hundred and fifty acres that they already own. That, a couple of years ago, they kind of offered it to the city, and it kind of fell through the cracks, and we didn't get it, but for whatever the reason that was. Another aspect I think that you should put in here with the utilities is referencing the full service that we are with the city. In reading the annexation of the late sixties, one of the reasons why the city wanted annexes is because we're already providing police protection up there. So they're already doing it. We might as well get something. They got cigarette tax, I think at that time was one of the big incentives to annex all that land. And now we provide road maintenance and other components up there. But identifying that we're a full-service city, meaning, and maybe break that down, not everybody quite understands. When I talked to some of the people at the base, they didn't realize that we had the opportunity for electric, water, sewer, solid waste. And telling them, and the capacities that we have. It really perked them up. They said, "Well, how come nobody told us that? This would make a big difference." Because being down, further down, one of the complexities was, how do we take care of the sewer way down there? How are we gonna get it? We're gonna put a facility out in the ocean? What are we gonna do? And then understanding what we have with electrical and such, I think we can do about three times what we're doing right now. Water as well. So we have capacities in helping that. It seemed to be part of the sales point, as you know, building any, anything in an infrastructure is so important with that. But I just question again, Mr. Albrecht used to work out there, so it is all Bureau Prison land now?
I think they had that set aside to build a penitentiary.
Oops, on the microphone. Gotta go to the microphone.
It's been a number of years. I know that transaction happened a while ago. I know they kept a lot of the land, the Bureau Prisons, because they were anticipating building a penitentiary, but it ended up getting mothballed.
Okay, so maybe?
Yeah, I can, I can add all that. I can take, I'll take it all, and I can try another, another version.
So first of all, REACH is not in control of any of this. It is absolutely the Vandenberg Air Force Base, and REACH is facilitating Vandenberg Air Force Base's desire to build out a commercial district for the launch industry. Secondly, it's their property. I do not see them slowing this down to negotiate with Department of Justice to get land back that DOD gave to DOJ years ago and slowing down a project. Last but not least, both Vandenberg Contract Management, as well as REACH, are very aware of the fact that we are a full-service city. I think the better letter to write would not be to offer up acreage, but to offer up a letter stating what we're capable of as a full-service city, the partnerships that we could provide, the contracts we could provide for service for that industrial and business zone that they, as a base, do not want to run because it complicates their daily mission of serve and protect. The concept for building it on the fifteen acres at the south end, whether it's on the north or south side, was the idea that it was up next to and access to the launch facilities on base, but not inside the fencing. So I do not believe we will be able to convince the base nor REACH that slowing down a project to go through years of negotiation of exchanging property is a letter that we should be sending. I instead think the letter should absolutely be about what kind of services we could provide, what kind of partnerships, what kind of industrial space we have inside our city limits for those industries that do not want to be at this business park, but might support those at the business park, being able to build inside our city limit, and what those advantages would be. That would potentially be the better tool to involve Lompoc in the negotiation of what's happening, where it's happening, and how we benefit, not just from the jobs created, but from the potential contracts for services. Councilmember Cordova.
One hundred percent. I have attended numerous presentations, meetings, just been in at Vandenberg and have listened to their plan. And if you've ever sat down and listened to their plan, they've been laying this out for years. So for us, at the last minute, I agree, to throw something in that says, "Hey, by the way, look at this", I really think that that detours us from being able to really move forward on their plan. And that's exactly what I was trying to say, is that they've already identified their land for the reasons that Mayor just stated, because we have heard those presentations. We have learned what their plan is. I think that as a city, we need to support that, and we need to find ways to really put ourselves out there to them and say, as Mayor Osborne said, "These are..." to really put ourselves out there to them and say, as Mayor Osborn said, these are all the ways that we can support you. When people talk about having high-paying jobs, that's our avenue for bringing high-paying jobs into this city, is having these aerospace companies come in and be able to actually plant roots here.
Councilmember Mosby.
So, little history, in the 60s, it was anticipated around Floridale's where the industrial park was going to be at one time. So they'd planned movement out there, there was hundreds of acres zoned, because that's what they were going to put it. So things changed. What I'm not telling, not telling them to do something, I'm asking them to look at an opportunity. When I talked with some of the people at the base, they said they had no idea that we had something of utilities to offer, because that wasn't presented to them or told to them. When I explained that to them, they said that would be a heck of a sales point for us, the huge infrastructure we would have to build. And I'm not trying to tell them to do it, I'm just looking at another option. In a business, that's what you do. Sometimes you go a little fishing and see what could come up. Might not think it ever come of it. Might something too. But they hadn't thought about it. And the 350 acres that they do own up there, that's also an incentive that they had potentially to come off of. So I don't think it hurts to put something out there. If they come with us on something with what they plan to do, I know that in their inspections down there, they didn't realize a lot of the land they were looking at was in the 100-year floodplain. So that changed a lot of their plans down there. This land's not in the 100-year floodplain. There are significant advantages besides the fact it's inside the city limits. And I think it's our obligation to do what we can for land that's inside of our limits and to, and try to step up. It's not a demand letter, it's just, it's just a suggestion.
Councilmember Starbuck.
Yeah, I'll toss out, one of the advantages to being off of Vandenberg is the fact that you can facilitate what they call no foreign, which means no foreign. You have an Italian or French or whatever want to come out and do missile launches at this base, they can't do it on base without escort. If they're outside the gate, then it's wide open. This is property up there that's never going to be developed for city, and it tosses an option. So I mean, it really, I don't see the big issue here. Throw, throw the, you know, the lure in the water.
So if there are no more questions or suggestions for staff, we will open it for public comment. I will open it to in-room, but while that begins, I'll remind you, the number to call is 805-875-8201. And to mute your TV, computer, or radio when you call in, 805-875-8201. And we'll begin with in-room commentary.
Good evening again, councilmembers. John Lynn. So, back when I was mayor, we worked with the prison on acquiring some property out there for, for the Space Center project. And they were delighted to give us that property. Somewhere in City Hall, there's a letter from them that says, yep, we're all good here at the prison. And it's been sent up to the Western Region Manager, and they're prepared to approve it and send it to Washington. And so that process then requires that it go to Washington, and through an act of Congress, the land is transferred to the city. Now, clearly, we don't need that, because we don't need the land to be transferred to the city. I would remind the council that the prison no longer has a cowcalf operation, which is what that land was used for, for many years. And so it's excess to them. And what they've been interested in in some other projects that I've worked with them on over the years is something that provides training or employment for prisoners in transition out of the facility. So if there's something in it for them, then they certainly are cooperative. I am familiar with some of the folks higher up in the Bureau Prisons, and I'd be delighted to help the city with that. I think there are probably two things that this letter should say to the mayor and councilmember Cordova's point. We should say to them that we have this utility ability, and we, we are prepared to service whatever facility they want to bring online. But we also want to point this out to them. However, before that letter gets sent out, we need to, the city manager needs to contact the warden at the prison and tell them what's going on, because they don't like to be surprised. They have been great to work with in the past, and I anticipate that they would be great to work with again. And as the city manager pointed out, by using this property, they would not have to pay the 150% to connect to our utilities or to have that piece of land annexed into the city. And given Santa Barbara County, that might be a bit of a challenge. Thank you.
Thank you. Once again, the call-in number is 805-875-8201, if you wish to speak on item eight. Seeing the phone not ring, we will go ahead and close public comment and bring it back to council. I would like to suggest that we reformulate this letter to state proactively the ability to support with services any decision that they make on utilization of property, and make the suggestion of a secondary option within the city limits, and what that might be as a secondary portion to the letter, given the likelihood that they are already moving forward on their 1,500 acres. So that would be my suggestion, is to refocus the majority of the letter about how we can support whatever decision and location they choose with providing services, and what those services look like, and what that might be as an impact. And then the secondary portion to it be, there is additional property available within the city limits that requires. And as Mr. Lynn mentioned, if we haven't already reached out to the prison and notified a member of this, I don't know that they will have the bandwidth at the moment, because they are with an interim warden and have an outbreak. So I don't know that we will get immediate response, but we absolutely should notice them if we are suggesting their property go to someone else, given it's not our property. That would be my suggestion for a slight revamp to this letter. Councilmember Cordova.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
I would second that.
Thank you. Councilmember Starbuck.
I was going to make comment. It seems a fair enough compromise, and I think that, you know, bring the letter back, and I think we could discuss it and massage it again. But just to get it moving forward, I'll support you.
Thank you. Councilmember Mosby.
Well, I think it's way more complicated than that, the moment you start going against ordinance, because we have an ordinance that says you can't take utilities outside city limits. So the moment you start taking things outside city limits, it's way more complicated than just saying, hey, we'll do it. There's a long length of things that need to be done. When it's inside the city limits, we already have a layer of obligation. So I don't think there's any way you could support making a statement as such about providing utilities to wherever they're going to go. I think that's completely inappropriate without all the analytics involved with what had, have to be done. Like I said, you have ordinances that have to be modified, changed. They're way more complicated than just going out and saying something like that. My reason for doing this and making this motion for this was to keep it relatively simple, identify that's out there, let them know that this land is available, let them know that we have utilities, let some of them know that they have 350 acres sitting there as well, that is available, it's inside our city limits. In the past, we've, as a council, said, if it's out of our jurisdiction, we need to leave things alone. You're talking something eight or 10 miles away. Has anybody done the analytics to see what it'd cost to run power lines there, water lines and sewer lines there? No, they haven't. So making a suggestion, saying you would should serve them like that is just off the charts. Way, way too premature to be talking about something that they would be doing at South Base. I'm talking about something inside of our city limits. I think we're over-complicating it, and I think we're agreeing with your motion, you'd be agreeing to things that we can't afford to do. You know, sewer lines are a million-plus dollars a mile. Who knows whatever else would run with there. It's just, I think it's just way out of our sandbox to go to that level. I think we need to stay back at the simpler with the letter. And it's just, like I said, it's going out there to identify this, to see if there's a response and a comment to go back with. It wasn't supposed to get to the next level of making suggestions and trying to commit yourself to things you can't afford to do. I don't, I'd be willing to make a substitute motion to keep it much simpler, aligned with the simpler suggestions of adding on that we did originally with here, and keeping it involved with that. Likewise, trying to make contact with, with the warden up there, and keeping it a much simpler letter, keeping it inside our jurisdictions, keeping it inside our city limits and boundaries, not something that's 10 miles away. So I'd make a substitute motion with that.
What was the motion?
The recommendations that we made, keep aligning with this letter, some of the verbiage changes that suggested there of working together, adding on the 350-acre aspect that they own, and the fact that we are a full-service in explaining what that meant as the utility aspect, and sending it out to that level.
Councilmember Cordova.
So, who asked for this letter?
I did.
No, I know. But I mean, it was the purpose of this letter, because we're under the impression that, that Vandenberg is not aware of the services that we have to offer, that we're not already in a relationship with Vandenberg, because I attend almost every event that happens at Vandenberg, and I see the city manager there, I see the mayor there. I know that they've come into our town, they've done presentations. I'm a little confused, Councilmember Mosby, as to why you feel that offering them something that is not in their plan, that they've already written out, that they've already been planning for years, that the base is going to do their plan on their land as they wish, and why you feel that it's so important for us to send this letter, acting like we don't have a relationship with the base, or offering them something that is not in their plan? Why you feel so strongly about that?
I'm not offering him anything, other than to say, hey, take a look at this. Here's an idea. Here's something that you hadn't looked at, or if you had, simply get back and say, hey, no, we don't need to. But to put it out there as an option. Why? Because we have tried in Lompoc to do economic development. We've talked about it. This, if this would go, this would be one of those game changers that we need to do. It wasn't long ago, they actually, UCSB looked at potentially putting a satellite campus there. That fell through the cracks. It wasn't long ago, before you got on, council was offered, never came to the council, but the city was offered 350 acres from the base up there. Just trying to put something to coordinate together. Many times, when you try to do business deals, as you know, it's sometimes, just that one little spark ends up being the roaring fire. That's all I'm asking for, to go out there and to try to see, just not, not try to throw a monkey wrench in what they think they're doing down there. Although I'm hearing that they're finding some down there. There's archaeological sites that are complexities, there's the 100-year floodplain that they hadn't thought totally about. There's other things that are coming up into their face. And understanding, yeah, I don't go out there at the base, but when I hear that they have significant issues with potentially for wastewater out there. So there's a lot of things that are happening that are much larger, that this might be something that, sometimes you may be, you know, look at it again. And as the turnover, the base happens continuously out there, not everybody sees the options as they come and go out there. So in talking to some of the people, they said, hey, we didn't realize, we didn't know that you, there's some of these problems we're having could be solutions already. You're out of the 100-year floodplain, the base already owns 350 acres of it up there, and there's already options. So not everybody stays connected out there at the base. People come and go.
I get that.
And in talking with some of them out there, they said, hey, I didn't realize, this might be an option. So several months ago, I said, hey, let's just try. And that's all it is. It's a try. This isn't a demand letter. This isn't to say, forget whatever else. Hey, you might look at this. That's all this is.
And, and I appreciate that perspective, and that's why I think, as Councilmember Starbuck said, a compromise is the way to do it. You know what kills economic development in Lompoc? The fact that this council can never compromise on anything, because we've created a compromise, and that's not good enough for you. And so you are now saying, well, you can't do that, because now I'm going to throw a wrench in it, because you can't go over there and promising. That's what kills it, because we're not telling them. We're saying that if the means was available, the city of Lompoc is here, ready, and, and able, and willing to find that solution.
So the intent of my motion was not to promise something that we couldn't deliver, but to share the ability to provide services. I do know that the base is already exploring what partnerships they might have with us as a city, and what kind of services we may be able to either improve on what we currently provide or add to. So providing a document that states this as part of mentioning there is property within, inside the city limits that you do have access, while smaller than what you're interested in, that the base might be interested in knowing if it didn't realize was inside our city limits, is an avenue for discussion. But again, the base is moving forward on a project, they've been planning out for quite a while, and we really want to be a part of it, whether it's inside the city limits or not, because it will affect our city and be a huge benefit. So it really was about crafting the letter in a way that says, here are all the positives, and here's all the potentials, as well as the property. I think leading with the property unfortunately makes us look like we don't get what the base is planning, and that we don't respect the base as being the ones organizing this and managing this. So again, it was trying to not provide a letter that makes us look like we don't understand the hierarchy, the relationships, and what's going on, and instead provide an opportunity to be a potential partner. And that's really what I think this letter should reflect. Councilmember Starbuck.
Let's go right back to the beginning. If we deleted the paragraph that begins with currently Vandenberg Air Force Base, and we sent a letter describing our capabilities and what we have available to Melissa James, President and CEO of Reach or Hourglass, saying, hey, you know what, okay, let's forget about the base. They already got it. Maybe there's somebody else up in San Luis looking to come in here, or somebody, something other than the base. Let's do that. It's not, we don't have to go and, and lead the base in here with this. If they've got a plan, fine. They meet with Melissa James, maybe somebody else meets with Melissa James. Let's send a letter that just says, hey, you know what, while you guys are in these discussions with, you know, San Luis County and Santa Barbara County and whoever else, Monterey, that's involved in this, well, we can throw our name in the hat by saying, you know what, here's Lompoc, we've got 3,000 acres, we're a full-service city, and we are willing to work with anybody that wants to come here, even Vandenberg.
That is an excellent solution, and I'd be willing to make that a commendation, rather than it focusing just on what Vandenberg should be doing, but rather the opportunity for anyone looking to come. That, that is a perfect compromise for my motion. So I appreciate that. And if council-
Can I make that a motion then, or a substitute?
Well, I'm accepting your recommendation to the adjustment, and asking Councilmember Cordova if she would second that adjustment.
100%. Thank you for bringing that to the table.
Okay. Councilmember Mosby.
Yeah, just maybe one of the things with the light protocol, I mean, a lot of times my light stays on forever before you come to me. I was on well before Councilmember Starbuck's. The reason for this being is answering some of your statements that you said, and most definitely understand Vandenberg Air Force Base. I most definitely understand, have seen the roller coaster over the years and the plans, things that have been built and torn out. And understanding the base realizes that good ideas, sometimes good ideas do change. My simple suggestion was to go for a fishing expedition. I can understand with what Councilmember Starbuck, I'd like to, to increase upon what he, he stated with, like I said, the base owns 350 acres out there, and an enhancement on the utilities. Not everybody understands what utilities that we provide. So if you would make that on that, it'd make it simpler.
Absolutely. Any other questions, suggestions, changes, before we take a vote? Do you have clarity? Thank you.
I, sorry, Mayor, I just want to ask the city manager, does he have clarity on what the direction from the county, what this motion is?
Yes, I do.
Okay. And then I think there was a substitute motion made that never got a second, right? So we're on the amended motion-
Yes.
-of the mayor. Okay.
Yes. Any other clarity? Any other questions? Let's vote. And that passes 5-0. The next item is new business, item 10, purchase of semi-truck, trailer, tractor, semi-tractor and trailer using transportation, that was nine? Oh, look at me. Unfinished business, number nine, payment option- Unfinished business number nine, payment options and additional assistance for city utility customers during the COVID-19 state of emergency. And we have finance services manager Melinda Wall.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and City Councilmembers. On the April 7th meeting, council requested staff came back and present some options for utility payments and also to look at the phrasing on our late notice, now we're calling it a reminder notice. So what we're asking tonight is you take this information and direct staff regarding payment options or provide us with additional direction or alternate direction. So the easiest thing to discuss, of course, is the color of the notice. We have officially sent it out this week, it's blue and we've had a lot of people calling up, asking us what this is all about, you know, so. And we've been easy, it's been easy to answer their questions. So what we've done is we've taken out words like delinquency, impending termination and discontinuation out of the old reminder notice and this new reminder notice said that this is just a reminder that utility shut offs have been suspended at this time and please contact us if you'd like to set up payment plans or contact HEAP for help. Our original option for payment plans has always been that because they're usually two months late when they come to us and ask to have an extension, we say, we ask them to do it over a 10-month period of time until the amount is zero and then if the customer doesn't pay, then they would they would have to come and pay the thing in full. During this time of our state of emergency, we've suspended our late fees, we've suspended turnoffs. We've had payment arrangements for people that have asked for them and of course, you know, deferred the payment until the state of emergency is over. When we adopted SB 998, and I realize there's a typo in there and I apologize, but it's 998, the management services director is designated, can set up alternate payment arrangements. So we've always, we've had that ability since February, besides the one that we currently offer. And what we're suggesting for the state of emergency, we could do a variety of different options for payments. So what we need to do, once the state of emergency is over with and we go back to a business as a normal, is that we could ask them what they would need if 10 months, 12 months, 18 months or 24 months. We could do a current bill plus a certain dollar amount like $50, $100 or maybe 10% of the bill until it's completely paid off. We could ramp up the payment back so that they would pay maybe the first three months just their normal bill once we get back going and then we could go back to saying 10%, 10% of the bill after those three months would be the back portion that hadn't been paid while they were on the state of emergency. Again, you could do the same thing and have it at $25 plus the normal bill and or we could do it six months, the normal bill plus 25 and the rest of it then 10% over the period. But what we basically do is work with any customer that has an issue. They could let us know, we can do an agreement and that would give us a lot more options than we currently have. We have the CDVG Assistance Program that will be coming back to council that could benefit low and moderate housing, low and moderate customers. And additionally, again, they could go to the HEAP program through the Community Action Center. And HEAP, they've been averaging about $300 per customer and we've had people that that are, hadn't a job until the state of emergency happened and they've applied for HEAP and they've gotten it. So we have all those options there. I'd just like to say that we've been receiving payments on a regular basis and the council receivable may be just a little bit higher, but it's not much. We've seen that for customers, residential customers, their bill has gone up maybe in electricity 5% to 7%. And businesses have reduced a little bit about the same, so our revenues are about the same. We'd like to continue utilizing our payment arrangements that we have set up and whenever the state of emergency is over with and I'd like to answer any questions you have at this time.
Councilmember Starbuck.
Thank you. It appears as though staff, I had no experience or background in this, April 7th meeting, I got it. I think it's fair, it's an equitable deal. It also shows that, you know, you can receive your $9 per month available electric credit if you're in a, what did it say, income of 80% or less.
Yes.
At the April 7th meeting, I also tried to take some money out of the reserves and apply it to people's bills. Didn't fly. I don't know if it was misunderstanding or the council didn't want to go into the reserves or what happened that night, but we changed the color of our bills. I want to put a new proposal out. Carbon credits. We have $3.2 million in carbon credits in our electric fund. I'm reading old resolutions. I'm reading an old staff report where we wanted to commit $1.3 million of carbon credit to renewable energy to meet a 20, something down into 2036 era for us. That leaves a lot of money sitting in carbon credit. All of our projects we identified with resolution have been done. LED streetlights was one, 4KW to 12KV has been done and we still have this money. What can we do with that money? I'll mind you on the resolution, one of the lines it says here. City of Long Poak's Electric Division and Electrical Distribution Utility, other than for the benefit of retail ratepayers consistent with the goals is prohibited. This basically becomes money that's available to ratepayers. It's the ratepayers' electric company. Maybe we could work a few figures here that we can work into a rebate for all our electrical customers here.
As long as it's applied to electric, I think we'd have to go back and redo a resolution, but we would have, yeah, we have the resolution and I'd have to refer back to the electric department to make sure that we don't do something we're not supposed to do with that money.
It's our money, not theirs.
Yes, but we've set up a resolution that's no longer, hasn't met most-
We haven't rescinded this. I don't want to put you on the spot, Melinda. I know that this, I told you I'd be back in May.
And it is May, yeah.
It's May. I'm just curious, can we give everybody $150 credit on their electric bill with the remaining carbon credit money?
We might be able to. I'd have to look into it a little bit more and I'd be glad to follow that up, that that's what council wants us to do.
I think, you know, in the big scheme, being that we're in an emergency, it would be something that we could do rather rapidly. I, I'm doing podunk math and said, okay, you know what, with what's left, I think we could do it.
It is an option and as long as we're not turning anyone off, I think we have a month or two before things will start to get back to normal, that we could come back to council with a-
It would be best to have it done very quickly because the fear factor is still out there. Now we're getting a blue bill.
Yes.
So.
I'd be surprised how many people call because it's blue.
Right, and I'm just saying, you know, if we do typical government, I mean, who got their stimulus check in the room? You know, small business loans, I don't think anybody I've talked to has got one. So here is something we can do for everybody and I think we should be able to do it rather quickly. The money's there. It's not been purposed for anything. The only thing that's not complete is the renewable energy aspect of it.
If I may, Mayor and Councilman Starbuck, would that go too, so if someone had an outstanding balance, would that, whatever that amount turns out to be, would that be, excuse me, going back to the outstanding balance or would that be going like from this?
Electric.
For electric.
Yeah, it's electric money and it's got to be used for electric and, I mean, I guess you could use it on your bill, there's a resolution. Other cities have done it where they've applied it to the overall bill, but you know, it's, it's the, it's our electric utility.
And I just want to say that the way our billing system works, it gets a payment, it gets applied to the entire bill. However, you could probably look at the electric charge and base it on, you know, up to $150 unless they don't use that much electricity because we have some people that don't even use the $9 per month that we give credit for.
Yeah, I, does anybody know the answer if we were to redeem these carbon credits and let's just use around a hundred, $100? Would it apply to the overall bill or does it have to go to the electric only?
We could base it on the electric charges for the customer, but it would be charged on the bill and I would suggest maybe during the month, during the months of the state of emergency, you know, up to $150. But I still have to go back to the electric division and make sure that we can do this without a problem.
I'd like to go ahead and bring in Jeff just to make sure, city attorney, just to make sure everything's lined up properly.
Can I make something?
So Councilmember Starbuck, are you yielding the floor yet or not? Because this will ultimately still need to be discussed and go to public comment. Councilmember Mosby.
So I happen to have a friend who moved to Reading, Reading's a member of NCPA. So they got 50 bucks credit in March using the carbon credits. In April, they got $200 credit using the carbon credits for a total of 250 bucks, went against the whole bill. So I did ask the city attorney earlier if that was something that we could potentially do and maybe being that Reading is also a member of NCPA, so coincidentally kind of wraps around with what Starbucks been trying, Councilmember Starbucks been trying to do for a couple of months. But other communities are doing this, so it looks like there's an option. I did talk with Teak in a little bit, I think we have 15,000 electric meters. So we do have 3.25 million bucks in here. If we set at $150 mark, it still leaves a chunk of money and I believe you have another 600 to 700,000 dollars in carbon credits coming again this next year, which would be ample amount of money. I believe to cover up the other potential projects, but maybe staff could come back with more of that and I think the sooner we do it, the better. If you put it towards the bill, it helps with the AR, it also helps with the people who are behind in the whole net. It also helps the people who aren't behind, but helps, you know, it's a nice to see that and helps them get through this. It's the carbon credit money, I remember way back when, in 2014, sitting in the audience and they went down the list of items, I know Councilmember Starbuck at that time says, hey, can we give it back to the people? And the answer was, yes, you can, but we want to do these other things. It looks like they got a lot of those things done and that money keeps growing every year. And now you're at 3.2 million, it is the people's money. In 1968, it was the ratepayers that bought us into NCPA. So I would say that the carbon credits are the ratepayers' monies.
Councilmember Vega.
Melinda, going back to our staff report on the alternative payment arrangements. I see we have a lot of choices here. Our pandemic, we don't know when this is going to end, when people are going to be able to go back to work. So I think it'd be prudent for us to at least acknowledge that you have 10, 12, 18, 24 months to put something like that in place and allow the utility department to determine the length of time depending on the customer's arrangement. I think at that time, you guys can say you want 10% minimum per month based on the pandemic part of it, that they could be behind. And also I think that the change should be, people that defaulting on their payment arrangement would make the past due amount do payment do immediately. I think that's a little harsh. I think that we've done resolutions before where they said there was no waiver of fees or wasn't this. There was no way that we could work with you because it's in the resolution. I think that we should allow some flexibility in there. So if someone does make a payment arrangement with you and they came in before they default and they want to amend their payment arrangement because of some changes in their family or something that we should be able to, or the utility department should be able to work with them. Is that something we can do? It's obviously in the staff report, so it looks like we can.
Yes, we can, but I would put it under the discretion of the, of our management services director. At some time, the pandemic is going, or the state of emergency is going to be over with. So we have up to 24 months right now that we have designated. If a business or resident can recover in two years, how much longer do you want that to carry on?
Gotcha. So 24 months is already in your guidelines, is that what you're telling me?
Yes.
Because it says to me that we allow the customer to pay past due balance, so it sounds like these are alternative payment arrangements. Are these something that you're already utilizing? Does anybody ever get 10, 12, 18 months or 24 months?
No, right now, before the pandemic, it was a-
It's 10 months, right?
Program because that gave the person or the business a year because they'd already be two months behind when they go into a payment arrangement. So we'd like to get people caught up within a year period of time. Understanding that these are different circumstances and we don't know when this is going to end. We've suggested two years in this report.
And that's all I'm reiterating, that we utilize and make sure that people understand that there is some leeway here from with us to work with management services and the utility department. And I'm not sure if I'm going a little different because you're giving me a mixed message here that you use 10 months under normal circumstances. What I'm talking about is now during the pandemic because there's people that are worried because this is a forbearance, so to speak, which they're expected to pay that back.
But yes, we expect them to pay it back, but already we're giving different alternatives if they are low and moderate income. There is HEAP money available, there is a $9 per month credit that they could utilize. So, and then giving them another 24 months should allow them to come to more normal because this won't even go into effect until such time that you say the state of emergency is over with and they should go back.
You know, I understand there's HEAP money, there's $9. This is money they have to go after. This isn't money that you're helping facilitate that they go get so they can pay their utility bill. You're expecting them to independently go and file and apply for this money, is that correct?
We ask them to apply, yes, but we are willing to work with them, give them the forms that they need to fill out. You know, the CAC will help walk them through it. So we've even delivered the application to the individual's door through our our customer service reps.
And I appreciate what you're saying, you're there to help. What I want is the part that we can control here through the city, not through CAC, which is a nonprofit, not through HEAP, which is a nonprofit, not through another $9, not through Catholic charities, not through the churches that might have some money because they're all experiencing hardships. So we're here to see what kind of program and payment rescheduling program we can do within the city if people need it. So basically that's what I'm asking for, okay? You're saying we have a 10-month thing, but this is an emergency, this is a pandemic. We need to utilize some of the, what you have here in the staff report, so we need to say up to 24 months, but typically you're telling me you never go past 10 months. So I'm asking for a clarification so that we can move forward with people that are in my district, that are in Long Poak, that are wondering what kind of payment plan are we going to be subject to afterwards? Because right now it sounds like, since there is an unknown for all of us and we do want our money back, how do we, how do we approach this? how do we, how do we approach this? And how do we let people know we are going to work with them? We're just not gonna send them down the street asking for a donation.
Right now, we're trying to be very flexible with everybody and it's definitely a case-by-case basis. The reason why we have that, if you get off the agreement that you get, you know, have to pay it in full is because a lot of customers are frequent flyers and every single month they have a new problem. I have a new problem, they want a new agreement, a new agreement, so. But we are being very flexible during this period. That's why Melinda brought up the different options available too. But it is a case-by-case basis.
I got you, Dean. But you know, Dean, we're here to provide some sort of peace of mind also to the people that are out there, the ratepayers, that are being told, hey, we have late payments, you don't have to pay right now, but you have to pay. So what can we do right now? Obviously, we want our money back in the same timeframes in a normal business day and business week, but that's not gonna happen. You know, when the state of emergency goes away, there's no telling what kind of hardships we're gonna run into. And I wanna make sure that we're prepared to help the people that are actually the ratepayers, that are providing the revenue within our city so that we can move forward. The government should be helping our city to a point. I mean, everyone else is getting help. Are we gonna have to, as a city, go down and ask CAC for help or HEAP for help or the churches for help? No, we're not going to. So I want them to be able to do it with their heads up. I, I represent a, a district that is low and moderate income. These people are having a hard time. They were having a hard time anyway. Lompoc has been noted as a financially distressed city before this. You guys know this. We're all in this together. So I'm asking for some sort of guidelines from which you guys can manage, but it, but stretch them out for people that have been affected by the pandemic because you're not gonna be able to squeeze them for more money if they don't have it. And I'm also the default, and if they make a payment arrangement and they default, it's all due and payable. I think for people that can prove the pandemic or the people that say the pandemic affected them, they lost their job, they have other hardships, we should be able to say, hey, we're making a payment arrangement, we know you're not back to work, we appreciate your work.
Yeah, if they're getting affected by the COVID, that's why we've been, we brought those options to you.
Yeah, I got you.
And we have been trying to not say, okay, you fell off your plan, that's it, you're done. So we're trying to work with them on a case-by-case basis, because you're, you're absolutely right.
And that, and that's all I'm asking for, but I want it noted in writing so we can say, hey, if you default on your payment arrangement, I think that we need to have a little flexibility for you guys. You know, I don't wanna make a steadfast rule. If somebody comes up and they do have to make a change in their payment arrangement, I know right now, if they do it, you're gonna tell them no. Okay?
Right now, we're not telling them no.
No, but if someone makes a payment arrangement and they come in and they wanna change their payment arrangement, you're telling me, you're not telling them they can't change it?
Normally, we will tell them no, but we'll try and work with them, try and find out what their circumstances, look at their balance. And like I said, each one's a case-by-case basis. But during this pandemic, we're trying to work with them as, as best we can.
And, and all I'm doing is, is referencing the pandemic for the people that I represent and all of Lompoc as a whole. I've done a lot of interaction with people out there with hardships, with people at home. Yes, the, the electricity has increased, whatever you're saying, 6, 7, 8% in households, but the businesses are, their bill has gone down because they're out of business. So if some of those people end up losing their business and they're gonna lose the whole ball of wax, they're gonna have a different type of hardship. And I just wanna make sure that we have some flexibility within our ordinance and within your guidelines that let you work with them. Because I've seen where you say, again, I'm repeating myself over and over again, and I don't know exactly what I need to do to clarify so that the council and all of us can make a different decision, Dean.
No, I, I think I understand what you're saying, I appreciate it, thank you.
Is that something that's already in place or do we have to do something with this?
Something we've been doing, not very long, is we've been working on the case coming. That's why she brought the different options we're trying to.
Okay, and I hope the council understands where I'm going with this because everyone's falling asleep at the wheel here. But you know, we need to make some sort of an action item to make sure that if these guidelines need to be changed, let's change them. Let's just don't trust, let's do this. I know these people are credible people and they're gonna be, they're doing their job, but we have a different situation here. And I, we need to give them the tools they need so that they can help these other people as they have hardships. Thank you.
So according to the staff report, the very last paragraph says, "At this time, staff is requesting to continue to utilize and expand the payment agreements already in place or modify them to meet the utility customers' needs. Continuing those measures for a couple of additional months after the state shelter-in-place restrictions are lifted would allow the utility customers time to restore their employment and their income." So what the staff report is showing us is the different options that the utility department has put in place in order to accommodate as many different situations as possible, whether it's 10, 12, 18, 24 months. Those are all on the table. The other thing they are looking at and proposing is a payment plan and currently offering up ramp-up periods to pay back, varying from three months with additional dollars added on or six months. And so I believe leaving all of these in place and leaving these options, maybe somebody within three months after the state shelter has lifted, they've gotten a return to work and they want just a three-month window to get back to normal. Maybe somebody's still hunting for a job six months from the lift and needs the six months. So what I hear staff saying is, these are all the tools that we are currently employing, that we'd like to continue employing, and not just during the emergency stay-at-home, but after the shelter-in-place is rescinded and people are still struggling because it will be quite a while until many people return to work. Staff is actually asking that they be able to continue to use these measures that are in place to assist people for as long as 24 months. And if this economic downturn and unemployment rate is as bad as the Congressional Bureau says it will be of nearly two years, we will need to revisit this several times and potentially extend this option to help people. So I, I think the answer's there for you and, and I, and I really wanna make the point that that's what staff's asking. They're asking for us to agree to what they're currently doing and empower them to continue to be as flexible in as many different ways as they already are being and, and to continue doing that for a while after the state shelter-in-place is lifted.
Thanks for the clarification, Mayor. You read the whole thing, I read it also. And I see what it says, but it does, it does say here, "The payment plans could be altered as followed," and I want some clarification. I understand that the people need some sort of, and we, some sort of a clarification. It's, it's subject to interpretation. Yes, we will have to revisit this, but again, we're looking at, it's been two, three months maybe. What if it is six months, seven months, eight months? It's basically where I'm going with this, okay? So if we're going six months from now, 24, eight months from now, 24 months is gonna be a little bit closer. And I'm just asking what their flexibility is and what they're planning on doing so that we can not sit here and just say, this is how it's interpreted, but maybe it doesn't work that way. I've been on the dais too long to know that interpretation is subject to whoever the, the people that put this thing together is. So I'm just asking for us to make sure that it's something they're planning and willing to do. And I think you did say this, right, Melinda and Dean? I guess I'm over asking because we're to a point now where if this thing is extended, yes, the city needs money. But you know, you're right, we really didn't need to change the blue, but we did it so that people would feel safe. But it's better than saying, hey, it's all due and payable and your utilities aren't gonna be turned off before May 17th, which currently is what it says right now.
So, as I said, on the blue notices that have gone out, we've taken off the words delinquent, turn off, and impending termination. We've eliminated all that verbiage and just said, this is a reminder notice. And we've found that there's a great deal of population here that depends on the yellow slash blue notice to get them to pay. It's just human nature to put off paying unless you're getting close to a reminder notice date. I think you've all been very aware that when we first adopted the utility billing rules and regulations, it was a real endeavor on my part to get the accounts receivable amounts for utility billing under a management, manageable goal. I'm saying that we're really understanding the state of emergency. We understand people are needing that extra time. And we put in place an idea that if they're having problems with it, we expect them to come to us. But we don't expect them to sign an agreement and then not notify us that they need more time. So.
I got you, and thank you so much. My only issue here is on, if you default on a payment rearrangement, I just wanna hear that they can alter their payment arrangement before they default if they come in and present a hardship and you guys are gonna work with them. That's the part that I need clarified.
Yes, and that's something that the management services director.
And that's what I want council to understand, that I'm trying to make sure that the verbiage is there so we can come in and they say, well, that's not what we meant. You guys have been here long enough, okay? Thank you, I appreciate it.
Any more questions for staff before we open for public comment? Seeing none, thank you, Ms. Wall. Please call 805-875-8201. The number again is 805-875-8201. And mute your TV, computer, or radio once you are on the line. If you would like to comment on item number nine, are there any in-room comments to be made? If you would like to speak to this and you're currently in the chamber, please step to the microphone. Seeing no in-room comments, I'll repeat the phone number one more time. Mute your TV, computer, or radio. And it looks like we do have a call coming in. Good evening, you're live in the Lompoc City Council meeting. You have three minutes to provide public comment.
Okay, yeah, I'd just like to make a comment. I've been a resident in Lompoc for 30 years plus and would like to know, besides Mosby, could we also get rid of Vega? My vote will help, but could you just try to get a clue? You too. That's it, thank you.
Seeing no additional calls or in-room comments, I will check with the city clerk regarding any emails? None, thank you. Councilmember Mosby.
So if I can read again what, what Reading City Council did. This is Friday, March 27th this year, that, actually, this press release is then, "On Thursday, March 26, 2020, during a special meeting, Reading City Council unanimously approved the resolution to give Reading elect, city electric customers a $50 credit on their next utility bill. Originally planned to come out of rate reserves, the just resolution allows the credit to be drawn from the greenhouse gas emission funds, which is what we have, the electric carbon credit proceeds that we have, being a member of NCPA. And preliminary analysis, we could do upwards of $150. We'd have to kick it back to staff, let them come back to us with a report. But this could be, could be everybody who has an electric meter. It doesn't have to just go towards electric as they've done here, but this could save a lot of people a lot of anguish by giving the $150 credit. It could roll along through the months, help them out for, some people, two or three months with this. So I think it's important that we, we, we look at all these options and as it says right here, any other additional assistance to ratepayers. Here's something that another NCPA member is doing. I think it's something we could potentially do for our people as well.
Are you making that a motion to request staff to bring back?
I would make it as a motion, start to come back. I think in a month we could. I think Reading's already rolling with something like this, they could come back with the numbers. Yeah.
We can reach out to Reading too, to get their verbiage that they use.
Well, and I think our utility department needs to, our electrical department needs to vet whether the projects have been completed, that they did have money set aside for it. So I think it's important to make sure we don't completely rate it. Councilmember Starbuck?
I sometimes don't hear so well, but I'm gonna definitely give a second on this. I've really been trying to push something for a few months or a couple of months with this. But I mean, the urgency's now, not then. So I mean, the sooner we could get it back, the better it would be for the citizens. So I'm definitely gonna second this.
So we have a motion and a second. Is there any additional clarity or questions? Councilmember Cordova.
Are we providing any direction as to the payment plan?
So staff asked for that, but that could be a separate motion or you could ask to add on to that motion. So we were dealing with the current motion on the floor and then I was gonna return back to the agenda I stated.
Just wanted to clarify that.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second regarding utilizing our carbon credit fund to potentially provide refunds and give in direction to city staff to return as soon as possible, hopefully the next meeting, with a proposal and what that would look like. Any other questions on that matter? Seeing none, let's vote. And that passes 5-0. Staff did ask at the conclusion of the staff report that councils support what they are currently doing and allow them to continue to do what they are doing a few additional months past the shelter-in-place restrictions being lifted. And I would like to motion that we give them the six-month window after the shelter-in-place is lifted to continue working on this and reevaluate it at the end of six months, simply because we don't know how long the impact will be and how long the fiscal impact of the global shutdown of the markets will affect all our residents and their ability to return to work or find work.
I'll second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any questions? Seeing none, let's vote. And that passes 5-0. All right, finally, item 10, new business. Purchase of a semi-tractor and trailer using Transportation Development Act funding, adoption of resolution number 6326 parentheses 20, approving related budget appropriation adjustments. And we have our Aviation and Transportation Administrator, Mr. Fernbaugh, to make the presentation.
Mayor Osborne, members of council. Short and sweet, we're here requesting authorization to purchase a semi-tractor trailer with Transportation Development Act funds in the amount of $210,000. This was approved in our Transportation Development Act, a claim of 19 and 20. If you have any further questions, I can answer part of them. And Dirk Ishwada is here, he's our fleet manager, and he can answer any technical questions.
Any questions? Seeing no questions for staff, thank you, Mr. Fernbaugh, for that. And we will now move to public comment on this issue. The number to call is 805-875-8201. And please mute your TV, computer, or radio. While we wait to see if there's any calls, I open the floor for public comment on this matter. If there's anyone in the room that would like to speak on the issue, please come to the microphone. Seeing no one rise, we'll check one more time at 805-875-8201 for any incoming calls on item 10. Seeing no one call, we'll go ahead and check with the city clerk regarding any written, no written on this matter. So we will close public comment and bring it back for council discussion or motion to move forward.
We'll motion to move forward and accept it.
We have a motion, I'll second. Any other discussion? Seeing none, let's vote. And that passes 5-0. The final item on tonight's agenda is number 11, approval of one-time change order limit increase for city building division services with California Code Check for the fiscal year 2019-20, adoption of resolution number 632720, approving the supplemental budget appropriations for the change order limitations. And Community Development Director, Ms. Alacorn, will make the presentation.
So, good evening, Honorable Mayor, councilmembers, city staff, and the public here in attendance tonight and those watching from their homes. I am Kristi Allercon, the Community Development Director. Tonight, I have a request for approval of a one-time change order limit increase for the City Building Division Services with California Code Check. Just a little background, the Building Division has the Open Professional Services Agreement. The intent was for it to not exceed $166,000 over those two fiscal years. Due to various economic reasons that drive development, we've gone, we've done really well, I guess you could say, when it comes to the amount of building permits that have been pulled. You see the four-year comparison, so we've been very busy in the Building Division. In addition to the amount of work, we did go through some staffing changes. The largest component of the change to those staffing that resulted in a cost was the loss of our building official. So, we did have to fill that position with the consultant building official for five months, and those costs are usually higher than if we had somebody in-house. So, the other things I just, I also wanted to touch beyond, I know on this slide, it kind of shows you the building permits that we're doing. There's a lot more that happens in the Building Division beyond just issuing building permits and doing building inspections. There's plan review. We provide a significant level, sorry, we provide a significant level of technical assistance with our applicants, as well as constant general inquiries from the public. There is also, in addition, our building official is, you know, does all of the staff management, employee training, recruitment, evaluations, and goal-setting for our staff. Policy administration, one thing that we've been lacking in here in our City Building Division, and this is not to criticize anybody, but we've just had so much turnover and we've been utilizing consultants, so there's always been a different person in that seat. One of the things we've been lacking is formal policies and guidelines and, you know, kind of that overreaching divisional policies that touch on every piece of the development process. So, we've been establishing those, and that is another item that our building official is working on. So, you know, we're really trying to improve the processes. We hear the community, we hear what everybody's saying, we hear their concerns, and we, too, want to make things clearer, easier, and a little bit more simplified. We've also established outcome measures as far as our turnaround time on projects. So, the implementation of the turnaround periods will allow for analysis of the effects of fluctuation in staffing levels, as well as the effectiveness of the current process. These are our current permit turnaround times for building divisions. Obviously, there's those that kind of are the anomalies that go outside of those, whether quicker or take a little longer. Oftentimes, it is dependent on the quality of the plan checks that are submitted. The time periods described here on this slide are, you know, they are set utilizing our current staffing levels, and that means our building inspector, that is through the Consultant Service Agency, which, with a lot of the stuff we've had going on, we've really restricted it. So, my poor building official, who is here in the audience, has been called to do a lot more than a building official typically does, as is the Lompoc way, I always say. You know, we always go above and beyond and we do wear many hats. So, he does building inspections, he does plans exams, and he is our building official in addition to training staff and things of that nature and policy creation. So, there are those plan checks that it is more cost-effective to send out to the consultant, and that's broken down in your staff report. But the fiscal impact of the need for the action tonight is increasing the professional service agreement to the $375,000 for fiscal year 1920, the request for supplemental appropriation of funds in the amount of $180,000, and the cost increases with the consultant services. I want to clarify, we're mostly in part to the following costs that were separate from the planned building inspections and plan examiner. So, you'll see that first line there on the slide. It shows the building official contract services, which it took us about five months from the point where the separation occurred with the prior building official to actually being able to complete the recruitment of our current building official. And that was about five months at about $20,000 a month utilizing the contract services. And then the other costs that were not really budgeted for were the project-specific plan checks, cannabis projects, various types of projects that are a little more labor-intensive or that require, and then those that kind of weren't even new projects, they just kind of pop up, they're kind of problem projects that we need to get resolved quickly. It's a lot quicker to send those out and give them the special attention they need. Most of those, we were able to collect the fees at the 100% cost recovery, but they were still charged against the PSA. So, the projected amount there of $21,000, that isn't money we've spent yet. That is my estimate, and I did fluff it up a little bit because I don't want to come back to you again to get us through the end of this fiscal year. So, that's March through June. We are operationally being very conscientious of our budget and making sure that we are limiting the services as much as possible. So, in conclusion, staff recommends city council authorize the city manager to execute the First Amendment to the PSA with California Code Check, increasing the not-to-exceed amount from $125,000 to $375,000 for fiscal year 1920, and adopt the Resolution Number 632720, approving supplemental appropriations of $180,000 to fund those additional services. We also always offer you the option of providing us alternative direction. I will add that making, approving this recommendation will provide the Building Division the staffing it needs to meet the demands of the community, as well as maintaining an appropriate level of customer service. You know, I think you all know, the Building Division has had a bad rap over the years, and we are working very hard to change that. And if you've spoken with people in the community, I've heard it at the counter, that change is starting to occur. So, we don't want to lose our footing here. The Building Division does not intend to continue consultant services at this high of a cost on an ongoing basis. It is the intent of the divisional management team to reach a reasonable balance between quality of service levels and the cost to deliver those services. So, we are working really hard to kind of analyze the operations. Eric has been here a few months now, and I think he's gotten a pretty firm footing to determine what the operational needs are of the division so that we can continue to maintain that level of service, but given our city situation, to try and balance that with the cost of doing business. So, I'm here to answer questions. Eric is also here in the audience tonight to provide any of the technical input you might need, but let me know.
Ms. Allercon, can you explain where we're not collecting 100% recovery and why, so that we understand what we're supplementing?
Sure. So, a lot of our types of projects where we haven't been able to really fully recoup is those that are more labor-intensive. So, we've been charging the building permit fee, just the flat building permit fee, and some of these projects are coming in at 80% complete first plan check or 70% complete first plan check. So, we send it out, and they're coming back with corrections. When it's going back for the second plan check, it's being looked at with 30% of that stuff being new. So, then 30% of that plan check really is a first plan check, but then that one goes back again every time this has to happen. So, there's various reasons. One is the lack of, I guess, complete plans at submission, and the other component is a positive for Lompoc. It's the booming cannabis industry. With those projects coming in, whether they're tenant improvements or they are full new construction projects, it's a new industry. So, it is very labor-intensive and kind of in interpreting the code and the applicant's understanding of the code and, you know, kind of a lot of meetings and getting to where we need to be. We've seen some of them, luckily, because we do have the consultant, we've been able to spend a little extra time on the analysis of our fees to make sure we get, we're getting where we need to be and we're adopting policies that get us to 100% cost recovery. We've noticed that a lot of the cannabis projects, I mean, for example, I have one that is at three times what it costs us to do the plan check and building permit. And so, that one on its own, and then, you know, you have, if you have that 40 times, it can really hurt the division. So, we've implemented mechanisms to try and address those issues, and policy development is going on right now. It is a pretty labor-intensive process because we, building isn't the only cog in the wheel, I guess you would say, when it comes to a development. There's planning, there's fire, there's environmental, everybody is involved in these processes. So, we have to, it takes a lot of time, meeting together and talking about, what are you going to do, what do you need to do, what can you do with your staffing levels? So, I think we have a good leadership team within the Building Division to really start making some headway with that and establishing those outcome measures.
Okay. Again, anytime council needs to readdress our fee structure in order to recover the cost, because it is, as you say, a burgeoning industry that is taking more time because it is so new, if we need to reset fees in order to cost-recover, I think that is a responsibility of the council to not allow the taxpayers to underwrite private business. So, anytime that is something that we need to address, the sooner the better, because I hate seeing us having to dip into additional revenue instead of being able to do 100% cost recovery.
And we've started to do it. Unfortunately, due to COVID, we were supposed to be meeting with our fee study group. Dean had that all scheduled. We had our first meeting, we were half, we gathered all this data and have done all this analysis, but that kind of got pushed off a little bit due to whether or not the consultant can come out and meet with us. But we're ready, we're ready to, you know, make sure we're doing what we need to do. And it's nothing crazy. I don't want anyone to think when we say that, you know, the fees are more, they need to be more, they are still significantly lower. We did an analysis of our comparison to the other neighboring jurisdictions. We're significantly lower, and if not, we're just kind of right on par with everybody else. So, when you hear the rumors out there that Santa Maria does it cheaper, Santa Barbara does it cheaper, I'd really like to see their invoices from those cities, because from what we've gathered, we're doing it cheaper.
Thank you for that update. Councilmember Mosby.
You're back. I know it's past time for you.
There you know what happens.
So, the consultant was a large part of this, that we're not having to do anymore, correct?
For the building official component, you are correct.
So, that'll help. But some of the other items, we weren't necessarily doing, you know, the hourly charge, if it's an add-on and such, I mean, a lot of places do that. If you're having to send back, there is an additional charge. So, do you have that mechanism?
So, one of the things Eric is wanting to do, and, you know, again, it depends on workload and things like that, is to do kind of like what you would think of as like a pre-review before it passes the counter, before he sends it out for a plan check, or before we send it to the plan check examiner, for him to look and say like, "Okay, is this complete? Is this complete? Is this complete? Is this complete?" And if it's not, rather than start the clock on those costs or fees with the consultant, he reach out to the applicant and say, "Sure, you want to go this route? I think you have quite a few more things you need to address prior to submission to, for a plan review."
Do you have the ability to charge hourly for extra and above?
We do, and we are training our new, fairly new, counter staff that does all of the fee collection. And in addition to that, being able to utilize our consultant that comes in two days a week to assist us with really digging in deep into the program and looking at where the fees are. We've been able to identify those areas where, it's labor-intensive, constantly watching where everybody's at on their fees, but I do believe we'll be able to, when a project is a larger project that is much more labor-intensive and perhaps the building permit fee, the way it's structured, is not capturing the real cost, we do have that mechanism in there to capture the hourly rate. And we have done that in some cases, but I think we could be better at that. And that is something that Eric and I are working on, establishing the policy that we don't allow those things to kind of slip through the cracks, and we have a checks and balance in place to make sure it's all covered.
So, what you tell me is you've cured a lot of this issue for the future.
I'm hope.
You haven't even been here a year yet in this position, right?
Correct. So, it's a big learning curve, it's a lot of stuff, and Eric also hasn't, and as experienced he is he is in this field, it's always different when you come to a different city. So, we're working together, and I, you know, I have to give the thanks to Ann Schneider, who is our consultant that comes in two days a week, because she's really dug in and applied her many years of expertise in other jurisdictions to help us to better understand and better frame Lompoc's Building Division to be the best at the fee collection.
And I think it's also important to understand how much you guys, because that's nine months for 673 permits. We had 672 last year, and the year before that was 454, and the year before that, 403. So, you guys have been busy, busy, busy.
We're killing it.
And one thing also to remember, too, 50 years ago, you could build a 20,000-square-foot building with 30-page set of plans, and now you're probably 350 pages, and every year it's probably getting progressively more. And that analytics is probably staying well ahead of the, and the cost of it is more than the cost of living adjustments that you have in there. So, you know, stay on top of it. It sounds like you have, in the future, figured out.
Yeah, we have other things. I mean, there's tons. Anyone ever wants to come by and talk to me about what we're planning to do with the Building Division? We want to go electronics, plan submissions. We really are looking to simplify things and streamline processes. All of that costs money, but we are trying to be as frugal as possible and get it implemented so that we make it easier for our applicants.
I know when I've been with you guys, you guys have done a good job to try to get to yes, so I appreciate that, too.
Thank you.
Councilmember Vega.
Kristi, the Building Department has noticeably changed for the better with you behind it and as far as communication level between all of us so that we have a better understanding. And I know our goals, as we spoke prior, that maybe one day we'll have a over-the-counter plan check. One day, maybe, we can have that process where some of the larger cities have been able to afford that, so some people can come in and just get it issued over the counter instead of going through all the process for something simple as a window installation or something like that, if that's possible.
We do have some over-the-counter permits, but again, we have one new development services assistant who is our building counterperson and in the office, I would say, Wednesday through Friday. It's him and Eric.
Yeah, thanks a lot. I appreciate it. I mean, all my interactions from what I do for a living have been good at the counter, so it's been noticeably improved. So thank you very much. Thank you, guys.
Yeah, and I'd love to take the opportunity to let the community, those at home listening, anybody, if you have a question or something is odd, for us, it's all about communication. If you can reach out, reach out to me or Eric or whichever you feel more comfortable, we don't mind talking through things. It really is, we want to help figure out how to get you to your end result. Being open on both sides of the communication is key. So we want to, we're very much encouraging people to do that. I think I've had council members stop by and ask questions, and I say, send them in here, tell them to come and talk to me, let's get through this. So we're happy to do that. No one needs to be afraid of us.
Any more questions for staff before we open it for public comment? Seeing none, thank you. The phone number to call in is 805-875-8201. Again, 805-875-8201. Please mute your TV, computer, or radio while we wait to see if there are any calls on item 11. I will invite any in-room commentary. So if you would like to speak on this matter, you have three minutes, please come to the podium.
Finally got to the item I came here for. Thank you so much. First, I want to compliment Christie and Eric because the entire reputation of our building department has completely changed from something that could be described as confrontational to something that could be described as helpful. I'm particularly interested in the fact that we're now putting up time periods. Many years ago, when I was mayor, we had a contract planning agency, and they provided what they called their written guarantee of time periods, which were basically the same as these. And it ushered in a lot of business to the city of Lompoc because contractors and those that wanted to come here and build simply couldn't believe it was going to happen, and then it did. And you have no idea how valuable it was. It was more valuable than money. It was less about the fees and more about the time. Time is more valuable than fees. Secondly, I would like to say that we should create a document similar to what that group did long ago, and I'll get a copy to Christie and Eric, because it was extremely valuable, and we mailed hundreds of them out, and the return was outstanding. So I'm sure you're going to approve this budget change for them, and I hope you will give, each of you individually, will give them accolades for the good work that they have done. Thank you.
Thank you. The number again to call is 805-875-8201, 805-875-8201, and please mute your TV, computer, or radio. City clerk, was there a written email?
There was one. It was provided to council, to staff, and to the public and placed on the website.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Seeing no phone calls or additional in-room commentary, we will go ahead and close public comment on item 11 and bring it back to council for motion or discussion. Councilmember Vega.
I'll make the motion to approve staff recommendations so we can get our, and keep our building division moving in a forward motion and keeping those permits going.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any additional questions or comments? Seeing none, let's vote. And that passes 5-0. Madam clerk, do we have any written communications other than have already been mentioned?
Nothing more than you've already received.
Thank you. Again, now you have oral communications regarding city matters for two minutes. You may call in at 805-875-8201, 805-875-8201. Please mute your TV, computer, or radio, and you will have two minutes. Are there any in-room oral communications that would like to be made? Seeing no one rise, we will check with our call line.
You're live at the Lompoc City Council meeting. You have three minutes to provide public comment.
Two minutes.
Two minutes.
Hello, my name is Teresa Doughtney. I had an incident at my apartment building earlier. Sorry. Earlier this week, where somebody broke in, a tenant called me, the perpetrator was still there. I called the Lompoc Police Department, and I went there and I confronted the intruder. Lompoc Police Department showed up three hours later. I'm a little lady, this was a big man. I felt very threatened. I'd like to know what we are doing to support our police department, why there is no response to active break-ins. Thank you for your time.
Seeing no additional phone calls, we will close the oral communications and bring it back to council comments and meeting reports. Councilmember Mosby.
Nothing.
Councilmember Starbuck.
No reports.
Councilmember Vega.
I'd like the people of Lompoc to know that as a business owner, I do support opening businesses with common sense measures in place, and we're working on that right now. And I think it's imperative that all of us know that we're moving forward. Without revenues, none of us can survive. I've gotten many phone calls asking when we're going to open up, communicate with the city manager, and obviously, it's kind of out of our hands to a point because outside of the governor's recommendations and rulings, we're subject to the public health department. I just wanted you guys to know, we're here to push forward and let your feelings known, but we also want Lompoc to move forward and get the kids back to school and everything within common sense reasons. There's no reason that we can't start, at least looking at phase one. So thank you so much.
Councilmember Cordova.
No comment.
Thank you. I just want to remind the public that the city does have a website set up with information at cityoflompoc.com. It's on the main page. We also have a crisis line, 805-875-8071. For county-level information regarding the public health, the public health website is publichealthsbc.org, and the county's number to call is 211, and they will connect you with many of the nonprofits, many of the organizations providing assistance as well as mental health. The city also sent out a postcard like, last week, that was in both English and Spanish. It has a list of the numbers for the departments that you can reach out to, and we do have bilingual assistance available if you need it. I want to also mention that Lompoc Valley Medical Center sent out a press release today saying on Thursday, May 7, they will be resuming elective surgeries, and the county has stood up the regional plan to reopen draft committees to review. Those have gone out to committee. They are business community members. There is a group for Lompoc that is representative of many of our primary businesses. The goal is to provide the county with feedback on the draft guidelines by this Friday so that the medical teams and the county team prepping our plan to reopen have it finished as early as mid-week next week or end of week so that we're prepared for when the governor says we can move into full-on phase two if we have a plan that's been vetted. And that is what the county is working towards with the public health department leading that. So if there's concerns or feedback that you'd like to share, feel free to send emails to any of us about what your concerns are so that we can communicate that, as well as when it goes up for public discussion, much like the Santa Barbara, the Slow County Plan is already online, there will be an opportunity for the public to comment when it goes live. So we will announce that as soon as it is live and also share a link on our city website so that every business in the county, every resident, has an opportunity to comment on what the draft guidelines for reopen for Santa Barbara County will look like. We will adjourn this meeting until the next Lompoc City Council regular meeting of 6:30 p.m. on May 19, 2020.